We have a one-size-fits-all approach to zoning where you can take an acre and you can build eight townhomes or you can build eight houses. And so, a majority of people said that that doesn't make sense, that yes, we should have minimum lot sizes that correspond to those building types. And so, I think this is a question that really supports the approach that's being taken in this draft zoning code that we've prepared. I also think, going back to the previous slide about what are the least effective ways to encourage affordable housing, I think the visual preference survey that we did is really indicative of what people actually care about versus what they perceive is important when it comes to a city zoning code. And so, you know, the pictures that were in this, I will admit, are small, and so, it wasn't meant to be something where you could really study every feature of a house. It was really meant to say, you know, what do you see in this picture and do you like it or not like it? So, we had 19 photos on the website, and we picked the four favorite examples of housing and the four least favorite examples of housing, and I think the results are very interesting. On the favorite examples of housing types, number one was a townhome project on Bainbridge Island, which has four townhomes with 1,700 square feet per unit. This is actually a slightly higher density than, or lower density than what we will allow in our code, but this type of project would be allowed under the proposed zoning code. And so, this currently is not allowed in our code because you would have to have a 5,445 square foot lot per townhome, and nobody would build a project at that density. The second most favorite house, and I think this is really interesting because this is actually a low-income housing project in West Seattle. This is a house that is small. It's an 1,800 square foot lot, three bedrooms, one and a half baths, a 1,200 and 40 square foot house. So, a very small house, much more in line with what was being built in the 40s and 50s than what is being built today. And interestingly, this house doesn't have any garage. It just has a front-loading driveway with one parking stall on the side of the house that you can pull into, and it may actually have enough room for two cars. It was hard to judge from the photos. But it's interesting because it's a very small lot. It does have a one-lane front-load driveway, and yet, people in their responses about how can you encourage affordable housing said, "We don't want smaller lot sizes." So, that was one contradiction that was illustrated. The third favorite project was a mixed-use project in Burien that some of us saw on the field trip that we took. And this is a project that was built, 124 units, and it comes out to about 82 units per acre. Our current zoning, until we adopted the mixed-use pilot program, the most that we allowed in our zoning code until very recently was 20 units per acre. And so, this is four times the density of what could have been built in Port Orchard, and yet, people selected that as one of their top projects. It also has lower parking quantities than what would be required, although that isn't evident by the photo. And so, I don't think you can make the jump to say that, "Oh, yeah, we need a lower parking requirement." But visually, this project has less parking and was feasible because of the parking standard that was in place. Finally, picture 19 was another house in the same development as picture six, but this was a market-rate unit with an alley-load garage. And again, it was a very small lot, 3,400 square feet, one-car alley-load garage, and it was a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath house. This would be allowed under the new zoning code because the new zoning code allows for down to 3,000 square foot lots if you use an alley-load garage. So, I think the important takeaway from this is, in the pictures of what people like, and this is supported, I think this supports our design standards, the, number one, all of these projects have extensive landscaping. And the landscaping, I think, does a lot to mitigate the impact of smaller lot sizes. And all of them de-emphasize the garage, which is already a code requirement, though we're kind of restructuring how that code requirement works in the new zoning code by having maximum driveway widths relative to small lot sizes so that you don't end up with a situation where you have a big two-car garage on a narrow lot, because I think that's what people generally don't like. Moving on to the examples of housing types that people didn't like, a lot of these examples, the interesting thing is seven is actually the back of the house on number 19. And so, that was looking at an alley-load garage, and I don't think people knew what they were looking at. But clearly, if you thought that was the front of the house, you probably thought it was pretty ugly. The other houses, one of them is a very small house with a two-car garage, front-load garage in the Puyallup South Hill area. And, you know, it is on a small lot, but this is an example of a small-lot house that doesn't work. House number nine, my previous employer out in Edenville, this was a modest four-bedroom detached house, but it's on an 8,400 square foot lot. But it's totally devoid of any amount of landscaping, although you can see in the picture that they have some trees that they might be looking to be ready to plant. But I think the fact that there's no landscaping, there's not a whole lot of architectural variety or detail, there is roofline modulation but not a change in materials, and it's just, it's a pretty basic structure, and it's a two-story structure. And I think that maybe people have a preference, there's a certain segment that has a preference for one-story houses over two-story as well. So, in any event, I think this picture sort of illustrates that it's what the house looks like, it's not the lot size that's important, and the landscaping plays a big role in things. House number 10 was another house from this West Seattle development at High Point that included two of the favorite examples, but this is a three-story model. And so, I think maybe when people see three stories, they say, "Oh, we don't want a house that's that tall." And so, perhaps that's a consideration in our, as we develop the code. It's also a small lot at 2,700 square feet, and so, maybe small lots shouldn't have that kind of height, and that's a consideration that we would take into account. So, I think, you know, I posed a couple of questions at the end of this sort of interpretation of these zoning code, or zoning surveys results, and really, it's just to ask you whether you think that we're on the right track, that the, to think about whether the feedback that we've received through this survey supports the work that we've been doing up to this point, and whether you, you know, you agree that the design standards and landscaping requirements as a central feature of our future zoning code should take a front seat to some of the other considerations like smaller lot sizes, and to see what other thoughts you might have about this. And so, perhaps you want to take a few minutes to discuss these results or ask questions.
I wonder if people didn't understand about the small lot size versus a picture. You know, because they seem to like this small house.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think that was intentional, and in terms of how we set this up is, we didn't want you to focus on the lot size when you were making your decision about whether you liked or didn't like something. We wanted you to look at the picture and the aesthetic and sort of make that determination of, is this good or is this bad in your opinion? And I think if we would have had people focus on that, they would have said, "Oh, that's a small lot," or "That's, you know, that's too small," and made that decision not based on what they're seeing, but based on their perception.
But I thought one of the questions was, "Do you want small lot sizes?" Or something like that. And the answer was no.
Yeah, exactly. The question-
And so, that's all I'm saying is, I wonder if they don't know what a small, or what you can put on a small lot.
Yes, I agree.
Because when you look at the picture, it looks good.
I agree. I think that people, when developers cram a bunch of two-story houses with two-car front-loading garages into a development, and they're six feet apart with no yard, people say, "That's terrible, and we don't like that." And so, it's not that they don't like the small lot, it's that they don't like the huge home with a front-load garage on a small lot.
Right.
With no landscaping.
Yeah, with no, with bad landscaping or-
I'm surprised they like number 15.
I sort of am, too, actually. But I will say, it looks great, and I mean, it looks really good in the photograph. It, I mean, when we, this is the one we saw in person, right?
Yeah, we walked around this-
Yeah. Each side was sort of very different, if I remember correctly.
So, I look at that, though, and I think that would look good, like in Bremerton or something with a bigger footprint. But I don't think our town, it was kind of like when they built this, it was like, wow, look at that monster, like it didn't fit in. And it still kind of is that way. And I'm wondering if that would look out of place.
I think one is going to look odd, but I think if you have more than one, and it's around the town, like they've talked about, I think it will ease into seeming normal, as a reference.
Yeah, and I would point out that the blocks in Bremerton are much, are Bainbridge Island, no, Burien, this block in Burien is much larger than what blocks we have.
Huge.
And so, the scale of this building on that block is, wouldn't be possible here because our lots are 120 feet deep in the old part of town. So, I don't think you could, you could see a building this tall, but it wouldn't, it would be maybe wide and shallow, or, you know, deep and narrow, but you're not going to get the big square.
And it did have a lot of landscaping around it. Each side of this building is very different, and they incorporated landscaping, like built literally onto the building using grades, and they had some really smart design aspects, I thought, to it. It wasn't my favorite one on the tour, but there was parts that I thought were really strong. But I think the ones that everyone liked, too, if you notice, they all have a lot of greenery that's really positive, and it looks lovely landscaping.
The only thing about that is it looks good here. And they have gardeners, probably, or they have someone to take care of it, but eventually, a lot of it's going to look like that.
Well, on a lot of the backside of this in West Seattle looked like that, actually. I mean, some of the houses really kept up well, some of the blocks were a lot nicer, I think, than some of the others, but that's going to happen anywhere.
Oh, I understand that. I'm just-
But some of it did look sad on the other side. They had like a feel, a play area that looked like it hadn't been watered in a long time, and I mean-
Listening to this conversation, I think one of the drawbacks to the way the survey was put together is these are pictures of individual houses, not of a area, a street, or a neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
So, you kind of get a single picture of one structure and not how it fits into the entire zone.
That's a good thought.
And so, if you put one of these almost, you know, one of these favorites someplace in Port Orchard, it's going to look out of place because you don't have things that look quite like that, unless you put it in certain parts of the town. Because each area's got its own little bit of character, so you almost have to look at it like a, you know, four or five houses in a row to get the true feel of it. Plus, we also get an average of how well different people take care of it-
Yeah, for sure.
-and what it does over a long period of time.
Agreed. And with the whole thing in here that they were looking at, with the maps of everything on how the development is, a lot of this would be for that, so that would have some flow to it, I think would be nice. I was actually really impressed with all that they did here, with what you guys did in this, was pretty impressive, I thought. You did a really great job on the layout and explaining of everything, and I love the diagrams because I'm very visual, so that was great for me. And I also enjoyed, in the back, I love the examples you have for the rain gardens.
Mm-hmm. On the landscape code, yeah.
Yeah, I thought that was brilliant.
Well, we'll talk about the landscape chapter as we go through our agenda here because we haven't actually reviewed that in full.
Oh, well, I liked it, as we're saying.
Okay, so if there's no further questions on the presentation, we can move on in our agenda if everyone's ready.
All right. Are we done with the discussion on that? So, we'll move on to B, the recap of the previously reviewed zoning code chapters.
Yes, so, tonight we have, are you reading the, which agenda are you on the most recent?
I got public hearing zoning-
Item B should be public hearing zoning code update draft chapters.
Yours is different.
Well, that's because I paid the one for that.
Oh, hers is different.
It's because this is the one she sent us. She sent an email out.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't do that one.
So-
Oh, yeah, I did, sorry. I'm looking at the wrong one.
This is the correct one, right?
This is the correct.
Oh, I'm on the wrong one, never mind.
I'm on the wrong one, too.
Everybody should have a copy of the revised one.
So, as we all know, we've been reviewing these draft chapters, and we've been bringing them to the planning commission in batches, trying to introduce you to how the code is to be structured, what the land use tables, the building type chapter, and the individual zones look like, and there is still more zoning code to comment. So, this is kind of a recap of what we've reviewed so far and sort of what things look like as they're being assembled together. And this is not necessarily the final formatting of the document, but we're getting close on text. I think there's probably still a few typos that we will catch as we do, start doing a more cover-to-cover review of the document. But up to this point, we have gone through chapters 20.30, the introduction, 20.31, zoning maps, 20.32, building types, 20.33, the green belt districts, 20.34, the residential districts, 20.35, the commercial and mixed-use districts, 20.36, the industrial districts, 20.37, the civic and open space districts, 20.38, overlay districts, and then 20.39, which is the use provisions and use table. And then, tonight, we're going to be introducing the landscape code and significant tree code because I don't believe that we got all the way through that at our last meeting before the end of the agenda. And so, that's actually item D on the agendas. But really, the purpose of tonight was to kind of present the entire packet as far as how far we've come on this, see if there's any public testimony, and check in with the public, and then get back to the work of reviewing these draft chapters. And tonight is landscaping and significant trees, and then in September, we will bring you the next batch of codes, which will ultimately be followed by a public hearing. So, with that said, I don't have a whole lot more to present on what we've talked about already, but if you have questions, feel free to ask, and otherwise, we can move on to the public hearing.
Any questions?
None, good.
Okay, so we'll move on to C, the public hearing, the zoning code update draft chapters. Do you want me to open it, or do you want to say something?
Yeah, just open it and if we have testimony.
At this time, I'll open up the public hearing.
Still good.
And before we, before we move on, I did want to note that I've been making the rounds and giving presentations on what we're doing at various community groups. I've met with a group of realtors today, I've been to the Home Builders Association, I've been to the Rotary, the, I don't know, I think it's, I've gone to like six or seven luncheons in the last three weeks, and I'm probably forgetting, oh, the Chamber of Commerce. So, we've really been making the rounds and telling the public what we're doing, where they can find out information, inviting them to take the survey. So, I'm actually a little surprised there's not more people here tonight, but hopefully, they liked the presentation and they liked what they heard, and that's why they didn't care to show up. So, with that said, if there's no testimony, we can move on.
Okay, so at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing for zoning code update draft, for the zoning code update draft. So, we'll move on to D, the discussion of the draft zoning code chapters landscaping, chapter 20.128, and significant trees, chapter 20.129.
All right. So, the landscaping and significant tree chapters were written with help from our consultants who also worked on the design standards for us, which we adopted earlier this year. The overarching goal here, our existing landscape code was very cumbersome and difficult to administer. It didn't have uniform standards for when you needed to prepare a landscape plan. It didn't, you know, typically, a landscape chapter is doing two things. One of the main objectives of the landscape plan is to create buffers between uses, and a landscape buffer is a way to mitigate transitions from single-family neighborhoods to commercial, or other transitions between uses and building types. And so, a big part of this chapter talks about the different types of landscape buffers and how wide those buffers are when you have those transitions within the city. Then, the other portion of this is general landscaping of your site. So, when you go to actually develop your site, what are the requirements for a landscaping plan, for irrigation, for the maintenance of that landscaping, and for generally keeping your site looking attractive? And so, that isn't necessarily, that's more of an aesthetic consideration than it is a buffering or mitigating consideration as it relates to separating uses. So, I think, you know, I've shared this with the development community, and nobody so far has said that this seems out of line with what is expected of them, but I do think it's a whole lot easier to read. It also does a much better job with incorporating LID, rain gardens, and other environmentally, environmental stormwater-type features into your landscaping, and specifically allowing those stormwater features to be located within your buffers or your required landscape areas.
Can I ask a question?
Definitely.
Is all of this verbiage, is it new, or-
This is totally new. The old landscape code is in the garbage heap.
So, okay, because sometimes it would be nice to have something to compare it to. So, like, to put the new over the old, or?
It would just be one document deleted and one document, I mean, there's no, there's no way to compare them line by line because they're structured entirely different.
If you do want a copy of what we have in the landscaping code, I can copy and email that to you, if you want that.
Well, I just think it's difficult to know, I mean, this is probably great, I'm not saying that it isn't, but it would be nice to know what we are changing from, what we're going to, you know, because when you explain it, then we, you know, I don't know, it's just, I work with policies and procedures all the time, and we just, like, strike them out and put in the new verbiage, and then we kind of know the old from the new, and so, it's fine.
Well, can you guys give us a couple ideas on some of the major changes between the old code and this new proposed code?
Yeah, definitely. So, first of all, I would, so page 13 of the landscape code is the, talks about the buffering between uses. And I think this is, you know, this is really the meat of what it is that we are implementing through this. I think requiring a landscape plan and installing landscaping on your property is a pretty standard practice as part of our existing landscape code, but this is really saying that when you have, when you have different uses, and you're in, and it looks at which zone you're in, how wide your buffer has to be and which type of buffer it is. Right now, we don't have buffer types in our code. So, this is, so type A, B, and C are the three buffer types, and so, on page 12, it talks about, oh, let's see here, actually, page eight and nine talks about these different landscaping buffer types. And so, the, I'm sorry, six, seven, eight, and nine talk about the buffer types. And so, type A is a full-screen buffer, and so, that means that you have to plant tall trees, things that you can't see through, and so, it is a visual buffer, and that's your most intense buffer, where you would be separating industrial uses from residential uses or other things where you want to hide something that's potentially an ugly use or that has noise, or that has dust, or, you know, is generally somewhat of a, you know, an annoyance. Type B landscaping is a filtered screen, so it's partially sight-obscuring, but it's not as intense in terms of the frequency of plantings. And so, maybe between single-family and multifamily, you don't need a full screen because, for security reasons, you want to be able to see people coming and going, you don't want people hiding out behind the landscaping. And so, it's appropriate in other zones. The type C is a fully see-through type buffering, and so, it has different ratios of plants and plant heights. And then, type D is kind of all the other, this is your general landscaping, which can be lawns, trees, shrubs, any, really, anything, it's kind of a free form. And then, a low hedge is the fifth type that is allowed in certain situations, as well as a rain garden, which is another thing that can go in a buffer where you need to deal with your stormwater, and the best place to do it is in your required landscape strip. So, then, when you go back to the table on page 12 and 13, you, you know, if you're proposing a development and you're developing use, if you're building a moderate-intensity, non-residential use, which is, you know, maybe a townhome project, depending on what you're abutting, if you're abutting the mixed-use zones, you only need a five-foot type B or C buffer, or you can put in a path. But if you're abutting a single-family residential zone, or an R3 or a far, or R3, R4, or R5, it's a 10-foot A, B, or C. We don't really care about the type because the purpose is just to create some nice, attractive separation between the uses. But then, when you get over to the industrial heavy, when you have a use featuring an open storage yard, for instance, you're going to have type A or B required, which are more about hiding an ugly thing, and, you know, heavy industrial uses actually have up to a 20-foot buffer. So, it's really about scaling the buffer to the type of use in the zone in which you're in. So, that is definitely new. We also have parking lot landscape standards, and we, number one, we've tried to make these a little bit more flexible because right now, our code says, "You must have a tree every 12 stalls or eight stalls." I forget what the frequency is. And it's really hard to design a parking lot and meet rigid parking requirements when you have to take up a parking stall with landscaping every so many stalls. We really wanted to talk about how much overall landscaping needs to be distributed in your parking lot, and so, it's more of a square footage to parking stall count rather than a, every eight stalls, you must have landscaping. And that way, we give people flexibility if they're running out of space, or if they have an area that's left over that they want to provide landscaping, and we still get that landscaping and that vegetation without, you know, hamstringing the development or making something really difficult. So, it's made to be a little bit more flexible. The foundation plantings, when you have foundations that stick up a few feet above the ground and it's kind of an ugly concrete finish, we require plantings along foundations. That's not something that's currently required by our code. And then, the bonding and maintenance provisions have all been revamped because what we have now is not very effective, and in fact, the bonding provisions are totally contradictory because they don't distinguish between maintenance bonds and performance bonds. And so, sometimes a development will occur where you have, somebody is finishing their project, and it's fall, and they don't want to go put in a bunch of landscaping right before winter when it's going to die. So, they want to put up a performance bond that says that, "We're providing this bond, we're going to come back in the spring and plant this, and once we plant it, we want to convert this to a maintenance bond, which is a two-year bond to ensure that the plants don't die and that we water them and let them establish themselves." Right now, we require a 125% bond for the performance and maintenance, which are typically two separate types of bonds, and 125% for maintenance is a huge cost. Maintenance is usually, you know, 20 or 50% for landscaping, and so, we have separated those two types of bonds. And the performance is actually 150%, which is what we require for public works projects because it costs the government more to do everything because of prevailing wage laws. If we actually had to go in and finish landscaping because a developer fails to do what they said they were going to do, it's going to cost us a lot of money to administer that. So, that's, that is a significant difference. Any other thoughts, Carrie?
I like the table format of this that runs right along with the zoning tables. Just makes it easy for anybody to pick it up and understand it a little better.
I think it's good, too.
So, is the type of fencing addressed at all? If there are fences, I didn't see anywhere where that-
We have fence standards already in our design guidelines, at least for the, I think, to the fence, applied to single-family or in duplex.
Single-family and duplex.
Okay, so we have fence standards when it's a single-family or duplex-type development. I don't know if the design standards address those or not-
I can look it up.
-for commercial.
Especially like around the retention ponds.
Mm-hmm.
Like when there's a commercial development with a large retention pond, and then there's just a chain-link fence put up around it.
I feel like we address that in the design standards.
Yeah, we talked about that because we talked about possibly leaving the fences off and-
And addressing it here, right? Did we talk about that, like in the landscape?
We did, I think we did.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm almost positive that we incorporated that because that was requested as part of the design standards review.
Yes.
One of the other things that's in our existing landscape code that really, it's also in our public work standards, is we deal with street trees both in our landscape code and in our public work standards, and they contradict one another. And so, the street tree requirements need to be in our road section drawings that are in the public work standards, and because those are actually in the right-of-way and not on property that is zoned, they don't really belong in the zoning code, it's a street construction standard. I think the other, another big difference here is that the, for applicability, our existing landscape code does not, let's see. So, our existing code says that requirements for- So our, our existing code says that requirements for landscaping for a subdivision, short subdivision binding site plan or conditional use permit, shall be determined during the application review process. So it doesn't actually say that this is required. It says that the director is going to determine sort of arbitrarily what's required for what project as part of a review, which does not give a developer any certainty or any clear guidance as to what the city expects of them. The new code is very specific to where you can open this and say, this is what I'm required to do per code and there's no ambiguity. And it's not that the city can't impose a more strict requirement under SEPA, under our environmental review. If we determine that a particular use, maybe an industrial use is going to have a huge impact and we want them to actually build a berm around the use to help mitigate those impacts as well as wider landscaping. But this is kind of a minimum standard and it's black and white and it's, it's very clear to a developer what is expected. And it's also clear to the residents, you know, if you own a single-family house and you're adjacent to commercial property, you know, because it's in the code, what the code requires that developer to provide in the way of buffering.
Is there more questions or comments on that?
No, I like it.
You guys have any questions or? Let's move on to item E, the planning commission retreats.
So nothing, nothing on the fences?
Oh, we didn't do significant trees yet.
I thought, oh, sorry.
So Carrie, did you, did you find nothing on the, on the fences that?
In the design standards, we addressed blank walls, but we did not specifically address fencing in terms of design requirements. We did previously, the previous year, adopt standards for residential and for single-family and duplex residential fences.
Somewhere we talked about fencing. I remember having this conversation.
We did, and I remember talking about it too, especially the issue of fencing stormwater ponds, which is a, a safety issue as well as a design issue. I do remember that discussion.
Because we talked about Gig Harbor doesn't do it. But we do it. And so we talked about maybe we could relax that.
Yeah, I remember, I, I only remember it specifically around the water retention ponds. I don't remember it being any other aesthetic.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we talked about, we were talking about maybe incorporating it into the, when we address landscaping with this document.
Yeah, I thought, when we talk about the, in the design guidelines, the usable residential open space, we talked about how ponds could be counted as open space if they're designed with gentle slopes that are actually usable, rather than being the, the fenced type of pond. And so I think, I think our discussion really focused around providing the required amount of open space as part of your development and whether you could count the stormwater pond as open space. And by having a fence, you could not count it as open space. But it, it didn't specifically prevent you from doing that because the fence is a, you know, is really a safety feature for a pond that has steep banks.
Right. We talked about that and, and so you wouldn't be able to include that as, as part of your open space if it did have the fence around it. But we, we started to address the aesthetics of having like a chain link fence or, or the type of fencing to go around like one of those big retention ponds back then.
So there's a picture in the design standard of the Walmart pond. And it says, "The above image shows a stormwater pond that would not qualify as a shared open space. The pond is fenced and accessible to users of the development as lined by steep rocky banks." And so we, we put that in there as saying, we didn't specifically regulate the fence, we really regulated the, the pond as counting as open space.
In, moving forward though, is it going to be allowed to put a pond like that again in the front? I mean, that almost looks worse than a garage.
Well, it, per the design standards, the building has to come, remember, we have the build-to zone and the commercial zone?
Even if it's like commercial up there? I mean,
Yeah, yeah.
Commercial up there is different than commercial down here.
So you have, we're requiring buildings to be brought out to the street as part of this zoning code.
Even up?
Yeah, everywhere.
Up by Walmart?
Yep. So, so, you know, Walmart is typically the anchor and then you have smaller retail spaces. And so in this case, and I think one city that does this particularly well, that, you know, I don't think it's a great example of urban design, but I think they do a good job of mitigating the visual impacts is Lacy. If you're in the Marvin and Martin Road area near Olympia, all of their shopping centers have retail spaces that line the street that buffer the parking lot. And the stormwater is never out by the street because they're required to bring that retail space all the way out. But those are the, those are the junior tenants with the anchors sort of back behind them. So I think in the Bethel example, we would have made them put the stormwater pond off to the side or have retail along the entire frontage.
So we didn't really, we don't really have a conclusion as of to what we had and desired, right?
Yeah, and I.
We want the, we want it to be an, a, instead of a retention pond with a fence, we would rather it be an open space that's usable?
Well, yeah, because, so there's an incentive built into the existing code to make that a usable open space because you get to count it as your stormwater and your open space. You could choose to provide additional open space in addition to your fenced pond. But we really, I, I don't know that we want to go so far as to prohibit chain link fences because they're effective, they're low maintenance. And I don't think everybody, you know, the cost of building a cedar fence around a stormwater pond would be, you know, tens of thousands of dollars. And is, is going to be, is going to be worn out and looking dilapidated in a number of years if it's not maintained. So I don't think, I think we're incentivizing them already to try to make their pond open and inviting rather than a, an ugly feature.
And it won't be in the front?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be.
Right.
So if they were, if we were to like replace Walmart now, it would actually kind of be reversed, right? Is that how we're envisioning this?
Well, they have some retail in that parking lot, but they probably would have identified additional retail pads and maybe the building would be a little bit narrower and the stormwater pond would be along the backside, you know, between an access point for trucks delivering things and the edge of the property. But yeah, I think they would have changed, had to change the shape of the building a little bit and brought more retail out to the street to meet the, the build-to zone requirement.
Does a stormwater pond have to be round like that or can it run like narrow and long, like on the, like the, the depth of the property?
There's so many design considerations that go into it and a lot of it is going to be hydraulic. I mean soils and infiltration and where, where do you have the best soils for putting the pond? So I don't want to dictate shapes of ponds or, or.
Oh, I didn't want to do that either. I just was curious if, if they always have to be round like that.
No, they don't have to be. And, and really, the, the codes now say that you need to do rain gardens as a first choice and it's only if they're infeasible can you do a traditional stormwater pond like that. So the, the stormwater codes require low-impact development, it's just that we have terrible soil in Port Orchard and most sites don't support that. It's kind of a combination of most sites not supporting that and having a, most local engineers not being huge proponents of low-impact development to begin with. And so they're not quick to advocate for that. So.
So in a large, in a housing development, even a smaller housing development, if a retention pond is determined to be necessary, will they, is the location of that also regulated now a little more? Because those are upright on the street too.
That, that really comes out of the subdivision process and if that street is designated, you know, we have in the design guidelines, the landscape streets, the storefront streets. So arterials, you may not be able to bring a pond like that out to the street, but I think on most residential lots, where there isn't that type of designation, you potentially would be able to build that pond there. But the stormwater code really discourages that because it prefers low-impact development. As a first choice.
And picking up on, one of the other threads in this conversation is the fencing.
Yeah.
Where are we going to put the discussed fence in? Is that going to be in this landscaping or is it going to be somewhere else?
Well, I think we already have a fence chapter and maybe we need to amend it for commercial. But, you know, I think, I'm, I'm hesitant to restrict fencing because number one, in industrial areas, you know, I don't think fencing is probably an issue at all because you want security and it's probably chain link and, you know, barbed wire or razor wire. In residential zones, it's regulated in single-family and duplex areas. For multi-family, you know, I think the design standards that we have, I mean, people are building nice buildings. I, I don't really see people putting in really cheaper, unattractive fences as part of a multimillion dollar, multi-family project. So I don't, I think that we're asking ourselves if we should solve a problem maybe that doesn't exist.
Also for buffers, for fences that are meant to be part of a visual buffer.
Yeah.
We might want to have some.
But, but a chain link fence isn't going to be a visual buffer.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But a cedar fence would be.
A cedar fence would be because it's sight obscuring, so it's going to have to be a solid type fence.
But is that, that, is that addressed in any of these buffers on the landscaping?
Yeah, I, I suppose in the.
There's no comment of fences in the landscaping.
Yeah, we, we could look at, at indicating that a, a fence in a type A situation must be a solid fence. And a fence in a type B situ- situation could be a picket fence or something along those lines. That might make sense to include. I don't know if you want to go so far, you know, one thing some people like to do is use like a vinyl chain link, a vinyl coated chain link fence with slats and they'll use black or green slats to kind of hide things, which the nice thing about it is they're very low maintenance and they can be pressure washed and they're never going to deteriorate and so.
There's some, a new one by Dick Bliss. He put it up behind his new double lot.
Which we, yeah. Yeah, I, it's, it's a tough situation. I think St. Vincent de Paul is a, an example where they built a project on a very tight budget. We, they were required to do a fence and we allowed them to do the vinyl, I think it's been coated chain link with slats. And part of the reason was, I mean, I think that they were going to financially have a difficult time maintaining anything other than a very low maintenance.
It's not cheap. Dick Bliss was four grand and it's not huge.
Yeah.
And I did a cedar one on the other side that's not huge and mine was forty-four hundred. So, I mean, it's not that much cheaper. I mean, cedar's a little more expensive, but I had a real small section of that.
The other part would be longevity and maintenance.
Maintenance.
Because cedar fences can look pretty rundown.
We've already had to spray ours eight months in.
But then again, chain links fence, especially the ones with the visibility slats in them, can look bad very quickly as well.
So.
There's maintenance.
Not that I want to add it this anywhere, I just want to know, that fence up here was an issue to some people, how it's backwards. Is that written somewhere that you have to put a fence a certain way?
That's in the single-family.
Did that just get put in there?
Uh, yeah.
And think of it this way, they're letting the burglars climb in and they have no way to get out when they do it reverse. Think about it. The slats are on the outside so they can just climb right in, but they have no way to get out once they're.
So then you've got them, you've caught them.
Sort of, yeah.
That's why.
And then your dog can get them. Whoever does that is not a very smart own homeowner. I mean, it's just not brilliant any way around, so. If you think about it, right?
Right.
See if you put boards on both sides and they can't get in or out.
Let's try it tonight.
Yeah. I already tried. It's true.
All right, so we want to move on to significant trees? So I think we touched on this previously, but the, the big reason for the change in the significant tree ordinance, I think first and foremost is that currently our significant tree ordinance only applies to new development. If you just want to go cut down all your significant trees and not develop your property, nothing says you can't do that. And so this ordinance basically says that, no, you have to retain, it doesn't matter when you want to cut them down. If you have significant trees, they have to be replaced at this ratio, whether it's part of development or, or not. And the other thing that we've done is, is previously the ratios were, well, first of all, they weren't clear. When you have to do required landscaping, it didn't clearly state that your required trees either counted towards your replacement trees or whether they were in addition to your replacement trees. And so when we started thinking about this, there's a, a site up on Sedgwick that's entirely forested right now that there, there's an application for development in. And they have something like forty significant trees. If they replaced forty trees on that site, it would be more forested than it is now and there wouldn't be any room for development. But they do have to do landscaping buffers around the perimeter and so they're planting trees every, I think fifteen feet on center or, or something. And so we wanted to make sure that, yes, you are allowed to develop a site that's forested. The intent of this ordinance isn't to stop you from developing something. And really, we wanted to value bigger significant trees more than little significant trees. And so if you're a thirty-six inch diameter tree, the ratio is higher than if you're a eighteen inch significant tree. And so I think that's what this ordinance does and it also closes a pretty big loophole that lets people cut down big, big old trees anytime they want, as long as they're not developing.
So like on Mile Hill where the new Taco Bell is, right next to it, it was all cut down and it's just like a, a hot mess?
Well, that's the county. I, I have no idea on that.
Well, that's the county.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
But, yeah, in any event, I mean, we do the best we can with what we have, but it's, it's definitely a tight rope when you're dealing with a developer trying to tell them that, hey, we have an ordinance that intends for you to keep these trees and not advertising that if you just want to go cut them down before you apply for development, that's perfectly fine. So that's, that's kind of the, the situation that we're in right now.
You have a, you had a incentive, kind of a purchase incentive in some, we talked earlier, where if they wanted to build a higher density here, they could offset somewhere else?
Uh-huh.
Is there room to do something like that with the trees?
Well, that's actually in here. Your replacement trees can be replaced onsite or offsite within a certain proximity or in a public park with the permission of the public works director. So, so we do allow those to be offsite. So I think there's situations where if you have a small site and there's, you know, a bunch of significant trees, there's no place to replant trees or your house is going to be covered in branches and leaves, you know, most of the year.
So that's like you said, that had forty significant trees, they could replace some of them onsite, but a number of those could be then put in a.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and part of this is if you have one or two significant trees and you're developing, we still want to create an incentive for you to try to retain those as part of your future development. And so you have to make the cost of cutting down the tree high enough that somebody would have an incentive not to do it. But you have to be, also be realistic about, you know, not making a site undevelopable because it happens to have a bunch of big old trees on it. So that's, that's kind of the state of the, the code in terms of where we're at right now. At our September meeting, we'll be introducing new materials and depending on what that packet looks like as we get closer to the date, we may have another hearing in September to talk about this or we may wait for October. And I think the other issue that we needed to talk about was, do we want to talk about the September meeting date?
Yeah, we should because it's right after Labor Day and I had sent out a question to everybody just saying, hey, would it make sense to move that meeting? And I think I, I heard from a couple of people on that. And then you're, you're gone.
The second, the second week of September, I'm at a conference most of the week. So.
So it would be probably later in the week.
Like Thursday, the sixth, yeah, the sixth would be okay for me or maybe the seventeenth, which is a Monday, or maybe the twentieth. You know, we could do it towards the end of September, but then we're right on top of our October meeting. So would any of those dates work, the sixth, the, actually, the sixth, the tenth, the seventeenth, or the twentieth?
I could do the tenth or the seventeenth.
I can do any of them.
Yeah, I'm not good on Mondays. So the tenth and the seventeenth are tough for me.
What was the other date? The sixth?
Yeah, Thursday.
Sixth or the twentieth?
I could do the sixth too.
I mean, there's no reason we have to move it, it's just that the Tuesday, the fourth is immediately after the holiday. I mean, was there a, I mean, that's a, a business day for us, so we don't have to change the data. So really, it's on, it's only if you want to change.
I'd plan on the fourth.
I'm good on the fourth.
You guys? I plan for the fourth, yeah. Steve, it is?
To the fourth.
Stick to the fourth.
All right, we will meet on the fourth then.
Okay.
Okay, and then you want to talk about the retreat?
So the long-promised retreat, which Annette reminded us of at the last meeting. So we were trying to get some ideas of what might be good topics for a retreat and what type of format would be most useful. And I had sent out just, you know, an email asking people for some ideas in advance. I heard from one person, but it was kind of more questions than, than answers. So I guess I'm coming back to you guys with, if, if we have a retreat, what are, what are the kinds of information that you think would be most helpful for you to understand what you do and how to do your job and could, you know, make you feel more prepared for what you're being asked to do each month? Are we looking at something that would be kind of during the daytime? You know, something that would take several hours of a working day? Are we looking? Are we looking at a weekend-type retreat or what, what would be most feasible?
Are, are you guys coming too?
Yes. I, well, I assume we would be.
Because the one that we had before, it was just us, which is fine. I don't care if you're coming on. I just didn't know what we were, but.
When was your last retreat? I, I don't know. Were either of us here?
It was like ten years ago.
Oh, gosh. Okay.
And we met at, um, actually, we met at Rob's house. It was when he was on here.
Okay.
And we just kind of, just kind of talked about what we, you know, about the city and where we thought it was going and kind of our ideas and just. And it's, if nobody wants to do it, that's, that's fine, but I know that when we did that, it was, you know, it was, it was pretty interesting. Yeah, it was.
Kind of an informal.
We kind of got to know each other and.
What would the actual, what's the goal behind the retreat? Is it one for us kind of a team building and getting a meeting of the minds and getting to know each other's thought processes better? Or is it for us to become more educated in theory behind design or both or? I mean, so what, for doing this, and I have no problems with doing, I think it's probably a good idea. But I would like to know what we're trying to accomplish by putting in six, eight, ten hours at a.
I hope it wouldn't be ten hours. But I think that's kind of what we're, we're trying to find out from you is what are like the gaps in, you know, either as you say, you know, team experience or, you know, a knowledge of the subject or a knowledge of the processes, anything that we can help you with that would, you would benefit from a more intensive discussion than we can have in our regular planning commission meetings.
I think that one thing that is, is different from when I started years ago is that we used to do the, what the hearing examiner does. So we knew more about what was going on in the city. So we, so when we come now, we have this packet and we work on the updates and that, but we don't really know what's going on within the city, like where the growth is or, because we're not, we're, we aren't like you guys that work with it every single day. And I, I think it's just me anyway, knowing the old way versus now, I just feel a little out of touch with.
I can agree with that.
So, we did the field trip though, right? A couple of months ago? Was that?
Well, that, and that was interesting, but you know, we've done, and not that we have to do that again, but, um.
Well, and I, I guess there's two field trips. Didn't we do a, we did a driving tour of the city to look at projects and the field trip to Seattle, but I think only Mark and Annette, you went, yeah.
I didn't go.
Or no, Sue, Sue, yeah.
But like going to Seattle, that's, that's great to get like ideas, but what's really happening here, you know? You guys know of potential builders that want to come in and do different projects and.
So are you looking for kind of a big picture, like development trends, you know, here's where building is going and here are the projects we're reviewing? Here's the pre-ops that have come in for this type of development?
Just kind of, yeah, be more involved with it. So then, when we look at stuff like this, then we have, yeah, it, it makes more sense to us.
Mm-hmm.
The context.
Yes, and, and it's like, well, if he over here is looking to do this, well, then maybe we should look at this different or better or, or it's fine the way that it is, so we can help promote.
Yeah. I, I think one of, one of the risks for us is that we can talk about ongoing city projects and development projects that have already been permitted, but it's, it's somewhat risky for us to actively talk about something that's working its way through the process because we don't want to say anything on the record that would indicate a bias one way or another against a particular project.
And I get that. I, I, and that's fine. It's just the people that have gone out for permits or, you know, even the local homeowners that are going out like for a permit to put in maybe one of those new little houses or something like that. Then we could like drive by and take a look what's going on and just to see.
I would put together a couple of things. One is I like the idea of kind of doing a field trip within our own town and community. And not necessarily projects that are necessarily coming up, but you could actually help us look at problem areas and see how, what we're doing is going to hopefully mitigate that in future. I also think that, actually, you've been walking us through the process. Walk us over your building. The other day when we had the, um, extra meeting in July, that was the first time I ever been in your building. I think it was an eye-opener when we looked up at the files and saw everybody's got their own property file in there. But to see the process of, if you're a homeowner or a contractor walking in your front door, the forms, the process, what goes hap, goes on, I would find that very interesting to see. Because we're making those people go through those hoops. So I'd like to see what the hoops they're having to do, how your department's laid out, how it works, meet some of the other folks that are working for you. We see you two, you're, you're the face of the department. I assume there's other planner twos, planner threes, et cetera. And the field trip, I think a luncheon where we can sit down, somebody's house, wherever, I don't care. Someplace quiet where we can talk and have this conversation, start to get to know each other and our own perceptions of our community and dreams for our communities, our community. Where we can then sit and talk about, say, yeah, you know, I like what they're doing over here. This looks like Drec.
I think we need to throw city council in there too in regards that I feel a disconnect. I kind of said that to you because we go over all this stuff for sometimes for months at a time and I feel like when it goes to them, they're like yea or nay and it's done. And it's in and out and I, and I feel irritated with that a little bit. Not at you guys, just in general, because I feel like we do all the homework and we do, you know, all the, all of this. And then when it goes to them, they just make the final decision and I feel like there's a disconnect.
Is it very often that they change, make much of the way of a change?
I don't know.
If they don't, I presume that it's.
Yeah, do you know?
Because our job is to vet all these issues so that they can make better informed decisions. But at the same time too, I mean, we, um.
When they do change it, I don't feel like we, I mean, they get the right to do that and I understand that's their position. But it's sometimes I don't understand why they make those decisions.
And there have been times.
Because they have the right to and I get that, like the flags. I'm just going back to the.
When you sit in the meeting, sometimes they're like, well, what did the planning commission say? And usually, you know, like Nick will be like, whoa, we got two of them sitting over here or he'll just, you know, give them kind of a synopsis of what it was we talked about and why we made the decision we did. Sure.
But maybe that's because I'm not educated enough and maybe I need to, as a planning commissioner, go to city council meetings, which I do not do.
How many of you have, have been through the short course on planning?
You mean online?
Or in person? I mean, I know we did one a few years ago here, but.
All the online stuff before I came to my first meeting. I got little certificates even.
Yeah, there, we may want to send you information about some additional outside training as well, just to kind of, you know, it's, it's kind of like government one-on-one for planning commissioners to, to better understand the legal framework in which you're working and in which we're all working, but, um, you know, I, I, we did put money in the budget also for training opportunities and so there are, I don't know where the state APA conference is this year for.
Spokane?
Oh, Spokane's a long haul. But maybe the, you know, maybe there'll be a training opportunity that some of you would be interested in going to and, uh, for a day or two and, you know, we can make that part of this as well. But I, I think an annual field trip to go out and look at projects, which I don't remember, was it last fall that we did that?
It was, yeah.
So, maybe, um, once we get through the zoning code here, we'll, if we have some time on one of our regularly scheduled dates, we can do another field trip. I think a field trip outside of the city, maybe not all the way to Seattle, but, um, you know, maybe we can go to Tacoma or, or go look at, uh, a project somewhere else would be a good exercise, I think some additional training. And, you know, we periodically have had retreats, our joint planning commission council kind of study session meetings where we talked about specific issues, but, um, you know, maybe next year, the, uh, for a portion of the, the annual council retreat, there should be a discussion with the planning commission that you maybe come for an hour or two to talk high-level visioning things before they get into more budgetary type stuff. So I think, I think, you know, I think you're, you have a, a right to, to want to have that level of communication. I think it makes sense. And part of what cities in Washington are going through is that the planning enabling legislation from fifty years ago set up this role for the planning commissions and then the Growth Management Act in the nineties really changed that, as did most cities going to hearing examiners because of the risk of, of appeals of decisions and sort of taking away the, the permitting authority which a lot of planning commissions used to handle and most of them no longer handle. Your role is really just this comprehensive plan, which is very formulaic under Growth Management Act and takes, you know, it, it's greatly reduced the role of the planning commission compared to what it was historically. So, um, yeah, I, I think it's, uh, it's important that we maintain that level of communication because it used to be forced and now it, it doesn't exist in the same way that it did previously.
Good info.
So I think if we could just start with just us meeting, you know, even if it's just an hour or two or whatever.
Have breakfast?
Yeah, something. If everybody's up for that.
Yeah. And just see where we want to go from there.
Okay.
Does that, does that turn into official meeting or anything or?
It does, yeah. We have to advertise it, so, um, I, do you, do you want to pick a time and maybe we, we do a meeting at DCD and bring coffee and donuts or something and?
Yeah.
Can talk, maybe we can go through some recent permit history and kind of show you the permit process for, for various permit types.
Can we, do we have to like, can we like go outside of the walls though? Could we go somewhere else? Like, do we have to do it within this building or that building?
No.
Can it be more casual somewhere?
It can, but the only limitation is because if you have a quorum, it does have to be noticed. The public has to be allowed to be there.
Yeah.
So, they don't have to have any, you know, input into the meeting, but they have to be allowed to sit and watch if they want to.
I doubt they'll come though.
I know, but if you have it in your house or something, that can be kind of awkward.
Yeah.
Well, can, does it have to be recorded? Because I know some of the.
Yes, it, it does.
And actually, that might be an education for us to begin with is, is open meeting rules.
Yeah, if you, if you have a quorum, it constitutes a public meeting and it has to be recorded.
Right. And there's certain things you can't talk to each other about within certain parameters. So I don't know if you ever had that. When I was on Department of Health, um, board, that was one of those things I made sure the board heard every year from the attorneys.
I don't think we necessarily have anything that we're not allowed to talk about in our case. It's been a while since we went through the train last, but.
Well, not discussing in an open public meeting like this, but, you know, three of us end up meeting up over at Denny's for coffee and all of a sudden we're starting to talk about.
Yeah.
Planning committee issues. That can, there are certain rules against doing that.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to do that specifically, right?
Right.
Well, unless we have, if we'd have less than a quorum.
Correct.
You could do that.
And our quorum is five.
Quorum is five.
Who wants out?
Who's getting voted out of the island here?
I like the idea of, you know, just having a, an hour-long breakfast and just kind of like throwing some ideas out there and then I think probably from there, we could probably figure out where we.
Kind of set an agenda.
Yeah.
I think we need to do that.
I'd even go for a bit more than an hour, ninety minutes, because what time is it now? We started at six?
Right, seven fifteen.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, we can shoot a lot of breeze, but still have more to go.
Does that work?
It, are you thinking then of having a, a meeting that's kind of to talk about the issues you might want to get into more depth in, in a retreat? Or things that you want more information from us on or, you know, things you'd like us to coordinate with council, just coming up with that basket of ideas? Okay. If you want to arrange that amongst yourself, but please be sure to let me know in time that I can get it into the paper. So let's say at least two weeks in advance, so I can be sure to do the legal side of it.
For scheduling.
Yes. I would think at kind of like the end of September or something if.
Mm-hmm.
If that works for.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got to talk to our absentee ad members tonight too, see what they think.
So what?
Oh, Stephanie.
Yeah.
Yeah.
End of September works for me. August is really hard, so.
Yeah, that's not good.
Do you guys want to come with a tentative date now?
Yes, please.
Okay.
What about the week of the seventeenth? How's that look for everyone?
Yum, kaboom.
Yeah, that's all I've got going on too.
Of August or September?
September. What do you guys think?
I'm good.
What state?
Do you want to do it on, um, on a Tuesday? Or what is it? Monday? I mean, what did?
I can do Monday or Tuesday of that week or Friday, the seventeenth, eighteenth or the twenty-first. Or the twenty-fourth.
Tuesday's actually the only day I can't do it and on the first day that I sat, so I apologize on that. Any other morning I can do, but Tuesday, let me.
I'll be out of town on the twenty-first weekend.
Yeah, how about Friday?
I hate doing Monday.
Friday.
No, you're not.
No, he's going to be out of town.
I'll be out of town on the twenty-first for the weekend.
We go somewhere else. Oh, yeah, we'll run to my time.
I want to go somewhere else.
Yeah.
I don't know where.
We're going to the.
We're still on that week?
What time are we talking about doing mornings, evenings?
Can we do the twenty-fourth? That's a Monday. Are you, are you back by then?
I am. Um, are you talking about in the evening?
For breakfast?
Yeah, I have patients all day, Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays. And Monday night I have bylaws meeting.
Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays? So Wednesdays and Fridays are good for you?
Those are my better days, yes.
Okay, so how about the twenty-sixth?
No, Wednesday's good. What about you?
Okay, Wednesday's fine. Friday's fine.
Wednesday to twenty-sixth?
Okay, Wednesday the twenty-sixth.
In the morning?
In the morning.
Were you like nine AM?
No, it was like six-thirty.
Shut up. Count me out. We don't have a quorum anymore. You guys are saying.
Okay.
Wednesday twenty-sixth is what we're looking at?
Yes.
And the last thing I would need to know is where.
Time? Do we figure?
What was our time?
Nine?
Nine? Did you say, everybody? Nine?
It'd be lunchtime by then, I'm telling you.
You don't get a say.
Nine AM.
Okay, nine? Okay. Where do you want to go?
Where do you guys want to go?
Well, it, it has to be recorded, right, so.
It does, and if, again, if you have it in somebody's house, that makes it awkward if somebody from the public kind of just shows up.
We can do it at my cafe if you guys want.
No, that makes it work. That's.
I mean, I'm not cooking or anything. I mean, Wednesday's my office day. I don't do anything down there. But we don't have to. We could go anywhere.
Really, all we need is a big table to sit down at and it's quiet.
Quiet.
Makes the tough part there.
How about whiskey mulch?
Because they're not going to get that at.
Whiskey's not going to be quiet.
In the morning?
Are they busy in the morning?
Pretty busy, aren't they?
At nine?
I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know where's.
I don't either. I always go out of town for all this kind of stuff, so.
Who are you thinking?
I think your cafe's good.
Mine?
Yeah.
As long as you don't do anything.
I won't do anything.
Okay.
I'll put a reservation in so we have it.
Will it be open for breakfast that morning too?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we open at eight.
So it's going to be at Homemade Cafe?
Yeah.
Which, which place?
Homemade Cafe. Do you know where that is?
Nope.
Right over there.
Wow.
On the hill.
Really?
Some education need to be happened in here.
There's everything. We'll talk about where we work and what we do for a living.
Yeah, exactly. And who our relatives are, so we don't talk about them.
Purpleish color?
So.
I've heard of it, I just haven't been there.
That's right.
Okay, so, thank you. That's a good start.
Piss off my staff today, just now. Do we need to come pick up like an audio recording device from you guys or anything?
Yes, and if there's anything that you want me to research or prepare for you in advance of this, let me know. So I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
If you can let Stephanie and Trish know too.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to email them and let them know, um, about this, but if, if there's anything that they have specific concerns about that you know of that haven't been identified here, that they want more information on, just have them get in touch with me.
Okay.
We can also discuss it more on the fourth to clean to get these finalized.
Right.
And bring a list of, if we come up with any ideas.
Are we all on the city email?
I don't know how to get in.
No, I don't use that one.
I've been emailing everybody at home because I know there have been ongoing issues with access.
She doesn't mail to us.
Mine either.
City emails getting forwarded, because I get, you know, potlocked down on them, so.
So, um, the next thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from June fifth and July twelve. But I have two July twelves and no fifth.
Oh, maybe I got two of them on too. Maybe I got yours. I'll show you. I got July twelve. What do you have?
I have two twelves.
Oh, me too.
I got the fifth and the twelfth, so.
I wasn't even here on the fifth, so.
I wasn't here on the fifth.
Okay, good. So we'll switch. We got it.
Okay. And Annette, also in the folder for this, for the signed minutes, we, it turned out we didn't have a signed copy from March, so that just needs your signature as well, please.
Actually, I have one right here. I have the minutes in this folder. So let's start with June fifth. So, does anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I was here. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from June fifth.
One second.
Um, all in favor?
I.
I'm.
All opposed? Alright, so let's go on to June twelve. Alright, so let's go on to June twelfth, or me, July twelfth, sorry.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the July twelfth planning commission meeting.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And we don't have to do the sixth, right, I just have to sign it?
Correct.
Okay. So, if there isn't anything else, anybody have anything?
I don't.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was reading these comments though, on the back of this.
I was just starting, I was just reading them.
This is my crazy mind, um, Geek Harbor has also gotten rid of all their transients and loitering. It says that. Another good example, the city government cleaning up problems.
Rest me tonight.
Alright.
She just handed us this one, oh, it's over here, is this? Yeah, you've got.
Everyone's going to get to your own boss.
Insane.
Good. Have a good night.
I'm not razor work.
I'm going to figure out where my wife is.
Yeah, I like that idea.
See you later, he's going to be reliable.
Are my puppies making you crazy?
But I think maybe the retention function.
I do too, I may not.
But you know.